Hello, I'd like to call to order the January 8th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. You have in front of you two sets of, actually just budget workshop. If I could get you to review those budget workshop minutes and if I could get a motion to approve.
Does that move?
Penny, second. Hazel? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, and then if we could move to the tonight's agenda and if I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Penny? Jen? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject to have anyone wishing to address the board this evening. Seeing none, we will move on to reports and recognition with Dr. Letzey on the superintendent's budget presentation.
Okay, I'll just go on over to the podium if you don't mind.
That's great. Okay.
Good evening, and let me start by wishing the board and everyone in attendance and everyone at home who may or may not be watching a Happy New Year. Welcome back. It was a bit of a disrupted return to school last week as we know with Thursday and Friday snow, but glad to report tonight's forecast of disruptive snow or ice or other things fizzled out and we're looking forward to a warming spell a little bit later in the week. That's a wonderful thing. Before unfortunately another cold spell, but we'll talk about the warming spell first and think about that. So, tonight it is my great pleasure to present to you the superintendent's proposed budget for the 2018-19 school year. The budget document, as you know, is the result of a lot of hard work by many, many people. And I want to just start by thanking the members of the Board of Education for your support and guidance and assistance throughout this process. As you'll recall, back in December, the middle of December, we had a budget workshop together where we were able to talk about ideas and bring some things forward for the board's careful consideration. We think about the budget process as a series of formal meetings, but I've always found that workshop meeting to be a great opportunity to learn from each other and work together. And I think the three and a half hours or so that we spent together is testament to the value of that time. As I go into it internally, the thanks is a very long list, but let me certainly start with Dr. Keating who's been working tirelessly on this budget. I think that even Dr. Keating may have cheered a little bit with the snow days last week. Opportunity to finish a few things up. But certainly the document that I'm talking about at a high level tonight and then the details that you'll see as we dig into the document itself that you have are a result of Joanne's really outstanding work, working with all of our administrators and everyone throughout the district. Alongside Joanne is Tracy, of course, who is our, as our budget director, is checking and double checking everyone's numbers, is helping out everywhere across the district where people may need it as they're figuring out how to input things into the system and what line should this be in, should that be in. It's Tracy that's helping us to figure all of that out and again, working as a great partner with Joanne. Certainly on the programmatic side, the educational side more in the schools, Dr. Corente is meeting with people nonstop probably from October, mid-October on, are talking about budget requests, future focused, how do we plan forward so that we appropriately and adequately resource our educational program and our needs. Darlene, who is unfortunately ill today and isn't able to be here with us tonight, certainly working with all of her folks, has done an outstanding job with our special ed and we have some, and our related services, so school counselors, school social workers, others, all work directly with Darlene. There's some information and data I'll share with you tonight about that. Gary, who also unfortunately can't be with us tonight in HR, has done an outstanding job for us, working again with our enrollment reports and data that we have there. And I could go on and on, like I said, I won't, although I did joke with a few people earlier, since Clemson's not playing tonight, the whole night is ours, so no rush, we can just sort of ease our way right through the document. I won't do that to you, I value your time much more than that. So, as we go through this, I'm always interested and open for questions and we've got members of the administrative team here who have really worked very closely to develop the budget, which I'll present in its totality, but they really do know the fine details as well and are willing and able to help us out with that. But certainly I want to thank our five principals, all of our assistant principals, our district administrators and everybody who's really worked so hard. We are very fortunate, I think, in New Canaan to have such a high level of expertise in all of our areas, whether it's overseeing those five departments over at the central office that work together all of the time in order to develop and do the work that needs to be done, which then goes into our buildings and our five principals who work together with each other and within their building with their staff. I think we're very fortunate to have such expertise working on our behalf and specifically on behalf of our children and community. What would a budget presentation be without a quick discussion of the calendar? We are beginning our formal process, as I mentioned, quite a few meetings ahead of us as we go through. Tonight I will be discussing, as I said, the superintendent's budget proposal at a high level and we'll talk about specifics. Next Board of Education meeting on the 22nd, which is, is it a Monday? No, it was a Tuesday. Okay. Can someone check that? Is that, is our meeting on Monday that week or has it moved to Tuesday because of a holiday?
That's the 15th, the week of the holidays, the 15th, so probably is a Monday.
Okay, we might be, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's Monday.
It is Monday, okay, I apologize. So, our next Board of Education meeting, we'll be having further conversation about the budget and certainly answering questions in between and then at that point we look for the Board of Education to adopt the budget as its own after whatever changes and modifications occur. Then it moves from being the superintendent's budget to the Board of Education's budget. As we then move forward, as you see, we'll have the Board of Selectmen meeting in the morning on January 30th, which is really more of a discussion of capital, but the Board of Selectmen has always been interested in learning about our operations and the operational budget that we bring forward as well. The joint meeting of the Town Council and the Board of Finance will be held this year on February 6th. And then you see some of the other meetings here. The joint meeting is always a wonderful opportunity for us to share with both, members of both boards at the same time, information about our budget and our plan. And then the follow-ups are with the individual boards, as you know. And there's opportunity for public comment, public feedback throughout the process and certainly what's not on here is that starting tomorrow morning I'll be visiting with our parent groups, I'll go to the elementary school over at East tomorrow morning at 9:30 to talk a little bit about the budget and share with them some of the initiatives and things we have here, answer any questions they have. And then next week I'm going to, coming here to the high school to meet with Saks and high school parents as well and do the same thing. So, we look to create opportunities for folks, whether on the town boards or in the public, parents in the community to learn about the budget and to be as involved as they'd like to be. Another great way to learn about the budget is through our website. So, my presentation plus the budget document will be uploaded to the website after tonight. And there, again, we invite people to take a look and to learn and to ask questions if they have them as we go through. So, I've mentioned this earlier, the, earlier in the process to the board, it just bears repeating. Our district is guided by five goals that really do chart the course for us as we consider where we are and where we are going in the future. These five goals have remained relatively consistent through the years and that consistency, I believe, has really helped us to continue gaining momentum in positive directions and to capitalize on opportunities that we find as we're working towards these goals. As you know, goal one is our student learning goal. Goal two is our communication goal. Goal three focuses on the practice, instructional practice. Goal four is a school culture and safety goal. And then school five is our stewardship of resources goal. All of those goals and the indicators and objectives that we develop underneath guide us in our practice day to day and as you know, they also began, became the framework we use to develop the budget assumptions and related priorities, which then informed us in our decision-making around bringing this resource plan forward to you tonight. The sustained focus and commitment that the goals provide for our district are really invaluable in helping us to continue to progress and to grow. And it helps us to empower today's learners as they grow into tomorrow's leaders. So, going into the budget, there are some concepts that sort of, that undergird our work here. Certainly, another word for concepts here could be assumptions that we use as we go into and develop this. One is that the sustained success that we've experienced in New Canaan is a result of the investment the community has made and continues to make in its public schools. And I don't just mean resources, I know we're talking about budget, but I also, I also mean the parent involvement, the belief in the work that we do, the cooperation that we have, whether it's certainly the generous donations that we get of different, of resources and financial donations we receive, but it's really the involvement, I think, that's so valuable and really helps us to move forward. So, as we're doing this, developing the budget, we keep in mind different ways that parents are involved and opportunities to keep them there and provide for them. We also know however, that in this environment, the community expects us to continue to provide a world-class educational experience for our students. That's to the benefit of our students, to the benefit of our parents and to the greater New Canaan community. And it's our responsibility to do that. School district budgets, to understand the budgets, it's important to recognize that there are significant drivers in these budgets. Some are obligatory and we'll talk about those, some are a little more discretionary, but those large drivers really do drive that bottom-line number. And as, in consideration of assumption two, it's our responsibility not to allow a few really big numbers to crowd out innovation in a budget as well. So, you'll see that as, as we go through this a bit, there are those, those big drivers that are obligations that we've committed to for a variety of reasons, but we also have some innovative things here that we're proud of and we think will help us in relation to our goals, our assumptions and the work that we do to continue to move the district forward. And that's related to our last assumption here, which is that in our decision-making and our work, we're guided by our goals, our assumptions, related priorities as we do that, because we do believe that those help us to understand and know the community's values and they, we know that they're related to our educational mission, vision values here in the New Canaan Public Schools. So, as we think about our budget for next year, it's always valuable, I think, to consider what our investment has returned for our students, for our school, for our community in this past year. So, just going to take a quick look and I know that Dr. Corente earlier shared some of these data with you in the assessment report, but just to highlight, because I think it is important, because we're asking the district to make an investment in the schools, in us, people who run the schools. It's important to share that some of the returns on those investments in the past. So, we talked about, one of the ways we look at schools and their success or the progress is through the standardized assessments. Now, this is only one measure, certainly not the only measure, it's one that I think is important in some ways, but certainly my, years ago, my dissertation proved that an over-focus on standardized achievement scores can actually lead to detrimental leadership practices. So, we balance this and we look at it as a data point, but it's an important one and when you do as well as we do, it's worth noting. So, here at our smarter balanced assessment in English Language Arts, when we compare it against our demographic reference group, which is the most competitive demographic reference group in the state, it's a group of seven school districts that are similarly high-performing. You see that our students in third, fourth and fifth scored at the very top of the Derg. In sixth, they came in third in the Derg and seventh and eighth, second in the Derg. Now granted, a couple of students here and there can swing that, but it's that consistent record and you see our overall score was number one in both the Derg and the state. Math, we did even a little bit better, believe it or not. So, in grades three, four, five and seven, we were top in the Derg. In six and eight, we were second in the Derg. So, I think it's, again, a valuable measure of the return on investment for how are our students doing? And certainly by these results, they're doing quite well. And it gives me an opportunity one more time to congratulate Dr. Corente and the staff and the faculty and the curriculum team that work so very hard in aligning our assessments and our work to help our students to perform well. So, it's quite a strong return on investment. We also have to look at the high school and these are, this is a set of data points that we pulled in back in 2014 and when we did it, we thought, gosh, it'll be interesting through the years to see any trends in these data points and to come to understand, you know, what it, what it means about the high school. Certainly, a consistently high graduation rate shows a school that takes care of all of its students. So, whether it's students, the high-performing students, students who might be in need of additional support, 99% graduation rate shows that we are providing them with supports that they may need. The four-year college acceptance rates is about preparation for what's ahead. Accepted into top three choices of college, that's a relatively new data point that we're using. We asked the students to identify what are their top three choices and then whether or not they got in. Over four out of five of our students do. Attending most competitive schools, just about 30%, 29% here. And just to put some context around that data point, back a few years ago, if you remember, Jonathan Costa came and was speaking to us about schools of the future. We were talking about a variety of different things and he saw that number and he questioned it. He said, that's, that must be, you know, most competitive and highly competitive combined. He said, no, that's, that's good. He said, but no school does that. And I said, yeah, I know, but we do. And we dug into the data, came to understand it and sure enough, we do. And that's a statement both of how our students do, the strength of our program, and I think of our reputation nationally as a high school. Our average SAT scores look very different because that's the new school-wide, school day SAT that does not include the writing prompt, so we lose our comparison point there, but we'll pick up more as we go forward. When we talk about SAT though, and we look at comparisons and principally, you mentioned this before, it's important to note that we do generally have about 100% of our students take the SAT and often we're compared against districts that might have 95, 92, 90% of their students take it. And those, again, for us, three students typically is one, is a percentage point in the comparison. So, that's just an important piece to, to think about if you're, if you do look at comparisons around SAT. Our advanced placement courses are remaining consistent, yet our AP participation has jumped significantly, 159 students year to year. So, what that tells me again is that the support provided to students, the encouragement that we give to students, you know, there's a, there's a statement, a little saying I heard the other day, I just, I've repeated it so much, my kids are sick of it, I said, you know, whether you think you can or you think you can't, you're right. So, we want to help, encourage our students, help them to believe that they can and then help to support them when they do. We see that in our AP test scoring three plus. So, that's the, when you increase the participation by 159 students and your scores remain stable, then you're doing something right. And we're bringing students into the program that could have, could be successful and they are being successful when they get there. 200 AP scholars, that's again, an increase of 20. Our average ACT score has trended upwards as well. And similar to the AP, the participation in ACT has been increasing year over year as well. So, again, we see more students participating and in this case, our scores are increasing as well. The, again, point of comparison here, statewide ACT scores for this past year were 24.5 and we were 27.3. So, again, continue to perform strongly. This last data point is something that I feel very strongly about, having spent, you know, nine years as a high school principal. The connection that students make to their school in non-academic ways, participating in athletics, clubs, VPA, drama, whatever it might be, adds a degree of value, a depth to the experience that I think is very important for our kids. And my goal, and I know Bill's goal and the goal of folks at the high school is to get that number to 100%, but we're very proud of the 90% that we've reached at this point. I think it really shows the students are finding ways to be connected to our school in ways that matter. And you know, when you think back on your own high school experience, so often you think back about those clubs, those activities, those programs that you were part of, whether you're in athletics, in VPA, in Future Teachers of America, whatever the club might have been, those, they add such value to the experience that we really want to continue to develop our program to offer them, to offer those types of participation, those types of experiences to every one of our students. So, I think we're doing quite well on these indicators as well. Speaking of those other programs, again, with 90% of our students participating, the, our athletics program continues to do quite well. In 2017, our statewide accomplishments, you can see them there, but instead of putting up a picture of trophies, put up a picture of, well, a volleyball team, both because I spent all weekend watching volleyball and because that's the value of the experience, is that teamwork, it's the learning to be a member of a team in a system, in a program, counting on each other, trusting your teammates to do their part and doing your very best to do yours, adds so much to, to our students' experience as they grow. In our visual and performing arts, again, extraordinary recognition and I thought this would be a good time to plug the upcoming shows. So, on March 15th, 16th, we have 42nd Street coming. And you see there are five different shows here on this, this quick little banner. Most principals I talk to, most schools around throughout the state, they might offer, have two shows a year, maybe three. We actually do six. The sixth is the Student Drama Fest, which is now in its 27th year, where it's written, produced, directed, all by the students. So, we can't really create a banner for that because each, it's a short, a series of short performances, but really just outstanding work on the part of our kids. I didn't feel right plugging the high school without plugging the middle school, so Guys and Dolls is coming in March as well and all of those shows will be in the newly renovated Saks Auditorium. Again, just a brief look at the many awards then and recognition that our students receive, I think is just such a strong indicator of the success of the program. And it's, again, that's, that's why the investment's made and that's why the care is taken to develop a meaningful program, to resource it appropriately, to make sure the staffing is correct, to develop the people that are involved in those programs so that they can bring a level of expertise to our kids that really, I think, is unparalleled. They really do an outstanding job. Our efforts are recognized externally in a variety of ways as well. Certainly the suite of awards from Niche.com is worth mentioning, where the top 1% school districts in the state, number one best public high school in Connecticut, number one best places to teach in Connecticut, number two best school district, you see them all right there and it's number, our three elementary schools are number two, three and four in the state, right in succession. Really outstanding work. And I mentioned a few years ago, as Niche came on the scene, it was developed by a few, a couple of kids from Carnegie Mellon, they were looking to create a website that used a variety of indicators to look at and sort of rank. And I'm not a big fan of ranking systems, I've written about it, talked about it, and I think that it really does, it can narrow the, what we value in an educational experience. Specifically, I talk about the, the one that uses the AP test exclusively to do the ranking. What I liked about Niche when it came out, and I still do, is that they do look at a variety of indicators, including feedback from folks. So, there are surveys online that people can fill out and data they can share. The, I still don't, you know, I still think the best judge of the quality of a school system is the people who go through it. And the people who are best positioned to judge the quality of a school system are those that are experiencing it. But these external recognitions are important for us. And again, you see this, schooldigger.com, number one school district in Connecticut. We, New Canaan High School by USA Today was just named the best high school in Connecticut. US News and World Reports puts us in the top 2% of high schools in America. We are then, according to America's Best High Schools across the country, number 18 high school in the country. Again, I think we're better than that, but that's what they told us. The, the external recognition's important to, to consider. Again, it's, it's just another data point, but I hope that as we go through this, you see there's an overwhelm, whatever way you look at our school district, academically, the co-curricular participation, our VPA, where the athletics, the test results, whatever it might be, it's a high-performing school district. Our kids are doing very well. Our community is invested in helping our students to do very well. Our faculty and staff are wholeheartedly committed to doing all that they can to help every student thrive and succeed and that's, and for me as superintendent, it's just a pleasure and a joy to be a part of such a wonderful school district with great people. So, talking about resources a little bit, another way we can compare, we can look at our per pupil expenditures, NCEP, you might have seen that acronym, that four-letter acronym there. So, it's net current expenditures per pupil. These are the most recent data that's available right now. And again, we look across the Derg and Greenwich is not in our Derg, but we, we put them into the comparisons because they are, you know, a neighboring school district. You see where we sort of fall out is $3 per pupil ahead of Derrick Ann, but really right in the, in the middle of the Derg. I think that that's a fair place to be. Now statewide, there are 23 districts that spend more per pupil than we do in New Canaan, including these in our Derg, but there are 23 in total. The highest is, was in this 16, 17 year, was Cornwall, Connecticut, which spent $36,000 per student. Others, the, so that the danger with this data point is it has to do with your enrollment. So, if enrollment shifts and falls, then that this number can, can jump up in some of those smaller places, like Canaan, Connecticut, for instance, is relative, is pretty high. Some of the regionals are pretty high because their enrollments have come down. But it's another, again, another data point to, to take a look at. And when we look across our Derg, you think that while we strive to be number one in the Derg in just about everything, not this one. Oh, doing okay. So, I bring those, I talk about those pieces and I know as a Board of Ed, you're well-versed in most of what I was just discussing, but I think it's an important way just to lay the groundwork for what we're going to be talking about when we talk about the budget and the resources ahead. Because again, a budget is not just a financial document. A budget is reflective of the mission, vision, values and beliefs of a school district and a school community. The resources, the allocation of resources that we have presented in the budget here is intended to help us to maintain the excellence that we have, that allows us to get the results that we just saw, and to continue to grow and continuously improve based on the needs that are identified of our students and best practices in our field. So, when we think about, what are the themes of the budget itself? Well, first, we have to respond to shifts in enrollment demographics and student needs and we'll talk about a new program we're, we're bringing forward tonight and we'll talk about some of the, you know, again, the enrollment briefly. Appropriately fund those budget drivers to ensure long-term sustainability. You know, we've talked and we've heard about sort of what happens if we defer capital requests for too long, right? So, if you do it in your home, if there's something, a small repair that you put off for too long, inevitably it turns into a much more costly, larger repair that has to be done. So, we look to appropriately fund these things so that we can, in the long term, avoid those big spikes in cost because of short-term decisions that we may have made. We also, of course, look to continue to support the high-quality instructional assessment programs that we have, practicing responsible stewardship of the district facilities. And this, the budget, well, I'd like to talk most about operating, as you know, but there's also a capital budget here that we have to talk about that does do just that and helps us to be, to maintain our standard of excellence as stewards of the district's facilities, which are extensive and do have needs. Of course, the focus on the safety and security of our students and staff is paramount. And then the technology investment we've made through the years continues to evolve and to grow and to help our students to continue to learn in important new ways. So, as we, as we get into the numbers, I ask you to always remember what they, what they mean, that it's more than $10 here and $17 there, what have you. It's really about this collective commitment from all members of the town of New Canaan, the work in the New Canaan Public Schools, to appropriately resource our schools so that we can continue to deliver the high-quality education, really world-class education to the students of New Canaan in the most cost-effective and efficient way. You'll see that we've identified significant cost savings in developing this budget, you'll see some ways that we've captured some efficiencies, you'll see some costs that are, again, those obligatory drivers, that this is the cost of doing what we do. So, keep in mind sort of that, the big picture, the record of success we've had and understand that our goal in doing all of this is to sustain that excellence and to continuously improve in our practice. On behalf of our kids. So, here's a lot of numbers. This is just a very quick shot of the budget book, and I should pause here. Each of you did receive a copy of the budget book, which we'll go into more detail and it should be tabbed and organized and there should be a clip right there for it. And I see many of the budget binders and hopefully they're three-hole punched and you could put them right in there at the end of the night. I don't, just so it's not confusing, you also did receive tonight a copy of the CAFER report from the town, which is the, the Town and School District Financial Audit, and then a few supporting documents that go with that. I would ask you, you can put that aside because that'll just confuse things. We're just working through the budget document. So, I just wanted to mention that, so if you're looking at that and wondering if there's a connection to it, we'll mention it briefly as we go through the statement of accounts just so we understand, but since we have that in our possession, we thought it'd be important to get that to you too. And if you're reading through the budget and you get to the end and you just start dying for some more numbers, there's the CAFER.
Brian, can we just stop? Are there more copies of the, the actual presentation because it sounds like a few people don't have?
Oh, yeah? You don't have it? Okay, yes, there are. Hold on, it might be.
It's actually hard to read.
It's actually hard to read.
I don't have it, but.
It's okay, we'll get these numbers.
No, that's okay.
It was fine until we get to these numbers.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I know, we can share. Here's one, I'll share. Thank you. No, I have one. I don't think anything.
No, I'll share.
Share.
Yeah.
Because it's not in here. It's not in this packet.
Yeah. Oh, not in that package?
Oh, it is, yeah.
Where is it?
Yeah, it is here.
The number.
This is.
These are just.
This is it.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we just got it. Yeah. Yeah, I got it. I have.
Sorry, thank you.
No, it's, yeah.
Again? I'll flip the page.
Well, now nobody's going to look at me anymore.
I'm sorry.
All right, so. This, this chart here is actually excerpted from. Directly from your budget book. So. It is still page 14. Page 14 of your budget book, and this is just to put up a couple of the numbers that are important. And the point that I just want to make here is, the most recent data we have as far as budget expenditures is 2017. So we include in our budget presentation the actual expended budget for each of the objects, and then we go into the line items, from 2017, 16, and 15. So we actually do use the actuals there. Of course, this year's budget, the 2018, 2018 budget, is in progress, so we can't use actuals for a budget that we're still managing and still working. So what we do is we have the budget itself, but then Joanne and her staff spend countless hours developing what we call the projection. And now that we have our position control and our human resources, we can be much more accurate with our salary projection, so we can look at and sort of forecast that out for any salaried staff. Of course, the hourly staff are still, they're more difficult to forecast out because of overtime and some other things, but we get very close. But they also work through each of the accounts and create those projections. And then the discussion then going forward as we build this budget and we look at our comparisons really is with, we can, we compare the proposed with the projected, because the projected is, with our understanding and our knowledge and our experience and expertise, that's the, the closest that we can get to what the actuals are going to be a year from now. Now, there's always variation and things come up and change, what have you, but from a budget that was presented and developed a year ago versus the projections, which we've just completed a few weeks ago, we feel that comparing it as projections is a much more accurate way of budgeting and discussing the proposal. So, so we break that out. So we look at the 2018 projected, the 2019 projected, we draw those differences, and then we use that to generate sort of our final number. Now, the total budget number for the 18 projected is the same as the 18 budget. So your overall year-to-year would be the same regardless of which one you used. Okay? But it's within those account, those objects and then those different accounts, whereas you know, budget management requires us to be responsive to things that occur that may not have been anticipated, or, you know, sometimes things cost more or less than they did when you pressed them out a year ago. You know, as you did these things. So we, we make those adjustments as we go through. So, the bottom-line number for the budget, and what I like to do with, I like to start with that big picture, and then we'll drill down into each of these objects a bit, and then we'll talk about some specific items that are in here. The bottom-line number is, it's a request for $90,663,487, which does represent a 3.48% increase year over year. Now, though, you'll, if you look at the table briefly, you should, probably a couple things should jump out at you. One is of the $3 million or so, 2 million, two-thirds of it, come from the salary line. And then right below it, that 826 comes from the benefits, right? So we're looking at about 29, 2.9, coming from those two accounts. And then the rest is, you know, some up, some down, as we'll, we'll work through it. Again, we'll work through the details. And I'll talk a little bit more about the salaries and why those numbers are, are what they are. But this is, as I said, those are some of the obligatory drivers in a budget. We look at our staffing costs and the, the needs that we have. So, when we look at, on this slide, we're looking at the object level, right? So we have eight objects to our budget, the sort of big buckets, and then within those buckets, there are many different lines that we call line items as we go. Another way to look at it, and the way that is actually set up in your book, is around cost center as well. So you look at it by building or by specific area of responsibility. And I like this simply because it shows the distribution of our resources across the district. So we look at our three elementary schools, our East, South, and West, and they're right at the top, so it's 12 to 2 o'clock or so. And you see that there's the parity across those three elementary schools. And any variation there, there's a little variation that has to do with enrollment, a little variation maybe with the age of staff and where they are on the salary scale, but generally, they work, and I want to commend the three elementary principals that we have, they work very hard to, and together, to develop their budgets and to talk about the resourcing and to keep parity across the three. It's really impressive. Over at Saks, which is our largest school in the district, we spend the most money, by a little bit. And it's that purple there, and then the high school is just about the same, and its enrollment is just about the same. So this, this sort of, I think, reflects our enrollment patterns and shows us, the blue, the light blue that's difficult to read is the benefits system-wide. So we don't parse out the benefits per person to the different buildings, that's all in the Internal Services account. So that's why that 14-plus-million-dollar number there is separated out. But again, as you look through, you see, you see the, the cost of the athletics, you see VPA, curriculum instruction, special education, is that large, the number, the green on the bottom, the 11/8 or so. And we've got some, I've got, I have a slide a little bit later on that breaks that number down a little bit more, and looks at it in comparison to expenditures, some of our DURG districts as well. So bring, I'll bring some context to that for you. So let's go, go back to it by object, if you would, because again, we pull back out to look at it as a, at a district level, and then we'll drill into, and you'll certainly have time to drill into each of the cost centers as you like. I do want to just quickly say, at the start of each of the cost center chapters, there's a, an introduction written by the principal, by the cost center manager. Those introductions really are excellent highlights of what the, what's in the budget itself. They talk a bit about the enrollment, also about new programs, new ideas, other things. So the best way to learn more about the budget as you're going into it is to take the time to, to read each of those brief introductions, one page, and then to flip and look at the numbers. It'll help to really bring meaning to what you're looking at. And again, a budget for a school district isn't just numbers on a spreadsheet, right? It's, it means something. And so those narratives help to, help to develop that understanding of what those, the numbers really mean. So, looking at it by object, by these eight large objects, salaries and benefits clearly make up the vast majority. They're over 81% of the total budget at almost $72 million. The, in, in school systems, that's quite common. Actually, if you get into a more urban school system, the, the numbers shift a little bit. But for us, for a suburban school district, for a district like New Canaan's, to have 80, 81, 82% of your budget dedicated to salaries is best practice, is very common, because where does the work happen, right? What's the purpose of what we do? It's really about delivering the instruction and the education to our children, to the students that are care. And it takes people to do that, whether they are, whether they are general education teachers, special education teachers, or administrators, school counselors. You'll see of the, in the salary account, that is comprised of all of these different functions that work in our schools every single day. You know, the, you think about nurses, you know, the, what resourcing does it take to have nurses in our schools? Well, it's over $700,000. You know, it's 1.3% of this whole budget is to have our nursing staff onboard. You know, our campus monitors, our school counselors, the administrators, teachers, faculty, others. So you, you start to think about all of the people it takes to run a school district and to, to take care of the, the kids every single day. And, and the numbers, and the percentages are appropriate to what we're doing. So, what drives our staffing, of course, is our enrollment. And since you, we've gone through enrollment multiple times, I'm, I won't spend much time on it, but just to share and to reiterate that we are projecting at this point, very stable enrollment over the next five years. You know, we look out, I think we're just plus-minus a handful over the next four, based on this year's enrollment projections. And so we look at, with those steady enrollment projections, relatively steady staffing needs. Now, the, the budget book itself, at each of those cost centers, at the buildings, has our enrollment projections and a staffing plan that looks at where, where can we add staff, where must we add staff, are there places we can reduce staff, what does it look like? And when you look at it a little more deeply, you'll see there are a few spots where we're projected to be right at a breakpoint before needing a new section. So I'll share, I'll talk a little bit about sort of how we've managed that. But, you know, if we have, we're projected to have 100 students in our second grade in one of the buildings next year. Okay, well, we can resource that now at, you know, five sections with 20 students, which is the top of our enroll, our class-size guidelines. But if we go to 101 students, 102, 104, do we then split, add a new section? So that's, and you just don't know, because those, those changes happen, and while projections are en masse, can be pretty good, when you start to split them up across three different elementary schools, it can be trickier. So we continually monitor that. The enrollment across the district at the three levels, you know, what we've seen over the last couple of years, really, well, this year and going to next is the high school has increased as that, last year's eighth grade, this year's ninth grade, that largest class in the district moved up. So as they stay through the grades, the high school will stay relatively constant at a, a higher level than it had been. And Saks, you see leveling out at around 1,300 or so. The projections, of course, get more, are more accurate, the closer they are to when they were made. So each, next year, we, we'll resubmit our data, they'll regenerate the, our enrollment projections, and then we'll have a new set. And those will be most accurate for the following year, and then each year out, they get a little bit less, a little bit less. But I think the story has been here for a couple of years for us, that our enrollment's consistent, and we expect it to remain that, that way. So salary increase, the little over $2 million worth of salary increase in this year's budget, really is primarily focused, or primarily made up of, the contractual increases based upon our agreements with our employee unions. As you know, we have, we have six employee unions in the district. The, we negotiate regularly with them. I think we negotiate quite well with them and quite fairly with them. And so there are, we do our agreements. So as teachers move through the salary, the table of experience, there can be, there are increases in their salaries as they do. The, so that, that's a large part of it. They, we also, looking at our enrollment, looking at the distribution of students, we were able to decrease staff a little bit. So we're, we're at Saks, and the next year's fifth grade looks like it's going to be about 35 or so students fewer than what we have this year. So taking a close look at it, speaking with Greg, we're going to reduce our FTE count in fifth grade by two teachers next year. Now that, we look out at the projections, we very well may be, a year from now, if Clemson's not playing in the national championship again, we can be talking about needing to add those, those teachers back based on the enrollment projections. But we thought it was wise to, to realize the opportunity this year to take that efficiency. Our class sizes at the fifth grade will remain solidly within the class-size guidelines, and so there, there's a savings there that we're able to capitalize on. We're also going down 1.0 in the elementary, looking across the, the class, the distribution of students. But I mentioned before, there's a number of spots that are right on the line based on those projections. So what we've done, and you see it below, we've put in a 1.0 FTE for enrollment variability at the elementary level, which we've done in the past and which has actually served us quite well. So with the one coming out, and then the one as the enrollment variability, it's a wash at the elementary school as well. And then we are also building into this budget a turnover savings of $100,000, which we did last year. And that's, we're, we're right on the line, I believe, we're pretty tight. But we believe that, that's, that seems to be a number that works for us for the, the turnover savings as we're planning forward and building our budget. The additional staffing that we're looking for is the 0.6 FTE here at the high school, based on the, on the world language program. We've, when we look at our class sizes in the world language, we fi, found that, we found a number of them that were over, I think it was six or eight, that are over the class-size guidelines with 25 or more students. And as you know, we, we focus on world language here in the district as, with our FLESS program and other things. And probably of all disciplines, and this hurts me to say as a former English teacher, but probably of all disciplines, class size is most important in world languages, where you're expecting students to be speaking, listening, reading, writing, viewing, in the target language, you're assessing them, you're giving them feedback in real time, it has to be communicative. That's the point, right? You're learning a language, you're learning to communicate. And when you have 26 students, 27 students in those classes, it can be really problematic. So Lizette, Bill have worked together and proposed a 0.6 additional staffing here in the world languages, which I think is certainly an appropriate request. The alternative program staffing, and I'll talk a little bit more about the alternative program in a minute, but we have been developing, a team has been working for the last year and a half or so in researching best practices, visiting other, other alternative programs, talking, learning about our students in a different way, understanding sort of what, what student needs are. And we do believe, and I believe strongly, that this is a program that is appropriate for us and that would help us to deliver a program for our students here in New Canaan that's the right one and that they deserve to have. So for that staffing, for that program, it's, it would be 1.0 general education teacher, and that, whether that's one teacher or fractional FTEs for existing staff, that's something we're continuing to discuss, because that, that would be the, those are the FTEs required to deliver the academic program to the participants in that alternative program. A 1.0 special education teacher, although it's a general education program, we anticipate that there would be special education students who would be a part of it, and this teacher would be working directly with them. 1.0 school social worker, because this, the program really is, is being developed to meet the therapeutic needs of students who are really struggling in the traditional academic program. We currently have something called the AIP, which is the Afternoon Instructional Program, which we've had for a long time, and it's really served the district well and students well for a long time. But in the recent years, we found that the student need was outstripping the capacity of the AIP to meet it. Specifically, the AIP really meets four days a week in the afternoon for a couple of hours, and students need, need quite a bit more than that now. What we're finding is they need the therapeutic component to a day program, which then opens up opportunities for them to be involved in the school in different ways sometimes, which speaks to what we talked about before, about co-curricular participation. It also provides opportunities for the students to be involved, employed, working out, working in different places, and sort of adding that to the educational experience that they have as they go through. So to help with that type of work, there's also a teaching assistant included here, who would be able to communicate with, directly with families, with the community, liaison with the high school, so that school counselors and others are scheduled to come in and to share those resources with our students in the program as needed. And the teaching assistant helps to do a lot of that coordination and management and scheduling. So I'll mention a little bit more about the finances of this in a moment, but the alternative program itself is something that we feel very strongly about. I know there's been some, you know, conversation about where it would be housed, and we'll continue to have those conversations, but certainly the need exists, and the budget that's for you is appropriately resourced to begin this program, starting in the next year, to get things started for our kids. And then the last piece is grid progression for teachers advancing on the salary schedule, which is just one of those things that I, it always flags for me when I look at it. These are for teachers who are moving, see, from one column to the next, right? So if they are currently in the, in a BA column, maybe they're moving over to the master's degree column, maybe they're moving over somewhere else. And it's, it's a significant number, and it really is a reflection of our teachers as continuous learners. And I think that's such a strong statement about our district and who works here and who is working with our children. They are committed to continually learning and growing. They're going to classes, going back for credits, going back for, for degrees, to continue to learn. And, you know, the best teachers are those that continually learn. And so I think that that's, that's just an important number to see, because it's, it's a significant amount of money year-to-year. And it really, again, is reflective of such a strong ethos in our faculty of And it really, again, is reflective of such a strong ethos in our faculty of learners and growers and wanting to do their very best for the kids. So going a little bit deeper into this, the world language is that shift in the enrollment, the .6 FTE. This is for certified staffing, the alternative program is 3.0. However, the alternative program also enables us to realize some savings in the amount of about $122,000, $123,000. So while it is three FTEs, with that savings, the anticipated cost, certified cost to get the program off the ground is about $62,000, $63,000. So I think that's an important note. So without the, if we don't pull the, if the program doesn't happen for whatever reason, the savings would be that, all right, the reduction in this year's budget proposal would be the $62,733, not the cost of the three. Because the, there's savings in the AIP program that we would shift over, so we would no longer offer the AIP, we'd offer this in its place. So that resources would shift over there. And then we'd anticipate that one student would return to our district from, who's currently being educated elsewhere. Of course, our goal is to return all of our students who are educated elsewhere. But as superintendent and as I deliver a budget, I'm always conservative in my planning around things like this. So year one, we anticipate that at least one student would come back to be a part of this program. And we've seen, and we've seen it happen in other districts and in conversations with those other districts with alternative programs as we've visited, it has been an important element. Because again, we do believe that we can do it best here in New Canaan. We believe that students in New Canaan should be, whenever possible, educated right here in New Canaan and a part of the community that cares for them and that they care about. So we believe that, so those two pieces of savings are the 122,670. So the cost is the 62,733. So total cost of requested certified staff in this budget is just under $100,000. Okay? For the non-cert, I mentioned the teaching assistant for the alternative program. But additionally, there's reclassification of an existing program, and again, at the workshop, you heard Alan talk about this, where we have somebody now who is working in the auditoriums, who is really working as scheduler and working as an assistant and doing really an excellent job, but we're really, we're looking to transition that and reclassify that position into a more skilled lighting and sound specialist position. In this way, we can best use and care for the equipment and the investments that we've made both at Saks and the high school. And this year's capital request, there's some, a request for some funding for the sound system here at the high school auditorium. And we feel that that position, shifting that position from just kind of pure scheduling and assistant to an expert role with lighting and sound in those spaces is a wise move. And again, we, and Alan mentioned, he's done some research, he's looked at other districts. There's not one model that everyone uses, everyone sort of answers this question a little bit differently based on their needs. So we feel that this is the right model for us. And then up on that is about $22,000 there, the 22,642. But it's zero new FTE because that will transition the existing position. The person who's in there could either, could certainly apply for the role or work as a supervisory aide elsewhere in the district. So our overall estimated new staffing costs, you see them here for our, at the high school, it's the enrollment increase of the world languages, and then the alternative program, and then split between the high school and Saks is that lighting sound specialist. There's our total for our new staffing costs. All right.
One question.
Of course.
Is that, that's offset by some of the decreased staffing as well?
It is.
Is that right?
Right. So the only offset that I took in putting this together was the, the AIP and the return.
I got it.
But the overall, the overall new staffing number is decreased by the 2.0. So the new certified staffing is a 1.6.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So our other, well, the other large increase here is in our benefits account. And this is really an increase in our anticipated expenses based on recent claims history. We were fortunate last year where we developed our budget for this year, but as we went through our claims, we had a few high claimants that we're still working with Joe on and talking through best ways to model out the projections. Joe's going to be with the board next week to talk, and this way he has the most updated claims and the most updated projections for us to use. So there's probably some variability in this number right now. We are still working very hard to contain these costs by, in plan design with our folks. And just in recent negotiations, both our food service and our teaching assistants moved from a PPO plan into the high deductible health accounts, HD, HP, health plans, beginning next year. So we're able to capitalize on that in this year's budget as we prepare forward. So they're in a PPO now and they'll be moving over. We're staying with that 90-10 coinsurance that we negotiated for with the teachers years ago. So the, at this point in the plant, the plans themselves are teachers, our administrators, our food service, and our paraprofessionals, and soon to be our non-represented are in the high deductible plan. And we're in negotiations right now with our secretaries, and we are upcoming negotiations with our custodians. So there's certainly a trend here that we anticipate to continue in our negotiations, and that we were able to realize some savings there. In this budget number, it's not just the contribution to the internal services fund, but it's also the obligation for FICA Medicare, which is based on our salaries and things we have to pay. So when Joe comes, he'll go into much more detail about our health savings, our health account and our internal services fund and the position and what have you. I just, I put this up, last year we'd shared this, and simply to show, you know, we'd been trending down, we'd been using some of the resources to offset costs for district and for employees. This year, we ended FY17 at a strong position. However, as you know, we, we have also negotiated along with the town for a new aggregate stop loss. And currently, the, what we have is 125% aggregate stop loss, where we had 120%. That extra 5% does require us to carry more in the internal services fund to cover that corridor. So Joe is working right now with our vendors to try to renegotiate that, try to get it back to 120, where then we could have a different conversation about the resources that may be available here. But we want to admit, we're, the board has always been committed to fully funding or resourcing, I should say, that corridor between 100% of anticipated claims and wherever the aggregate stop loss kicks in. And of course, as you know, we have the, an agreement with the town where we hold 60, they hold 40, or is it backwards, 60-40, right? Yep, so we held 60, they held 40 of that corridor and what have you. But still, when you're talking about, you know, a large number of anticipated claims, which is well over $10 million, 5% is a large number, you know, so we, as we look at that. So Joe is negotiating for us to try to bring that down, in which case, again, some of the numbers will move around the insurance line a little bit. But to show at least that we are in a strong position at the conclusion of FY17, these numbers come straight from the audit documents that you got tonight. Next, we have contracted services, and here, small change, but it's not a large budget object itself, so that's change of $140,000 or so, it's about a 6% change. But there you'll see it's the, some additional money for upcoming negotiations. Believe it or not, those of you that were on the teacher negotiations committee last time, we start again with the teachers this summer. So we'll begin those negotiations and that will be all through next year. So we know that based on our costs last year, we've put a few additional resources into our negotiations line for legal matters. We're also increasing our intern program district wide, and we've talked about this a little bit. Saks is picking up a couple of interns, and we looked across the district and Joanne and I talked about it and balanced off the interns across. So there's a lot, a jump in the cost for interns at the cost, at the cost centers, but you should also know there's a corresponding decrease in the substitute account. So we're using a substitute account to resource the interns because that's really, that's their first line, that's what they, what they do for us. So the jump in this, that's about 70 some odd, 72,000, I believe, $74,000. So more, about half of this is actually a wash with the money that came down in the substitute account. In property service, we're increasing just under $200,000. And there, a couple of large items, the maintenance project work we have for repairs that are below $10,000, it's things like mats at all of our schools. As you came to the high school, you saw those beautiful mats there that not only look great, but actually help protect the floors in the school by absorbing moisture and what have you. Mats at some of the elementary schools, some other things. So that maintenance project work total is $57,900. And in this property service, we've also, we flat funded the electricity, and that's through great negotiations, some energy conservation work that we've done and the contract that we have. We've also flat funded the heating fuel, and just a brief, brief mention of that, we are anticipating to have natural gas at four of our five buildings come the fall. We're hopeful for it, and we've been working with EverSource, so we're confident that they'll do it, and they'll be able to meet that deadline. And when they do, when we know that they're going to be able to do that, we'll use some of the money that's in the heating fuel line to pay for the retrofit of the boilers. And there'll probably be some additional cost, and we'll have to go back to the town and let them know what that additional cost is when we know that. But we thought that the best approach to this, because as in all things, it's not there until it is, right? So they're saying it's going to be there, and we are optimistic that it will be, but we can also level fund this line so that if, for whatever reason it's not, we're appropriately resourced for heating fuel next year, if we get indication in the spring that it is, we'll calculate what we can, use the, whatever the differential may be between natural gas and oil to pay for some of the retrofit of the boilers again, and then we'll go back, we'll let the town know what the difference is and get that done. We're excited about natural gas, think it'd be wonderful. It saves us costs in some other spots. As you know, it burns clean, I think there's potential to use it a variety of different ways, but initially, we're planning to use it just for the heating of the buildings. But that's, that's the approach. So if people ask, why didn't the heating fuel come down? Because we'll have the natural gas in place, we've left it the same to use it for that. And then we'll probably need a little bit more, but we didn't want to increase it. Instead, we'll, we'll have that conversation when the time comes. Does that make sense? Okay, okay, thank you. Some software licensing, time and attendance system for overtime management, a district media management system for art video and district wide, you see those things there. So the, you can imagine the amount of content that our schools have been creating these past few years, whether in our music tech classes or our video production classes, in our filmmaking courses, and all throughout, the content is massive. And we need a way as a district to start to manage that content, both so that we can store it and keep it and use it for instructional purposes and so we can share it, right? So we've used YouTube, we've used Vimeo, we've used some other sort of third-party free kinds of apps, but we've, we're hitting a breaking point with the amount of content that our kids are creating, and it's really outstanding stuff. So this, the video media, or the district media management system helps us to manage that content, to share the content, to use it across the school. And then a K-12 learning management system, we've talked a little bit about, an LMS. That learning management system is really a, it's an organizational and communications tool. K-12 is certainly optimistic in year one, but we're looking at phasing some, phasing in a program that will help teachers to organize their courses in meaningful ways and assessments and instruction, and help our parents to be able to see what's going on in the classes, help our kids, of course, so that they're not necessarily going to this teacher's website and that one's Twitter, and this one's something else, and this one's writing it on the board and whatever. It's sort of, it puts it in one place. And it does also prepare our students for what's going to come, students that are in college now, the vast majority certainly that I know, and my experience has been that teachers are using, whether it's Blackboard or something else, they're using a learning management system, maybe they're not calling it that, but they're using that kind of a system to manage their courses and their assessments and grades and what have you. So we've done quite a bit of work, Matt and his team have, along with Jill certainly, researching, looking at options, talking with districts and getting a proposal together. So I think it's a $45,000 item in the budget this year. We've had an increase also in our wide area network fees, both, both with the town and with the Connecticut Education Network. Town is increasing the fees by 50 cents per port, which 50 cents doesn't sound like a lot unless you have 26,000 ports or so. So we are at $13,596 on that. And then the Connecticut Education Network is part of the state's diminishing resources for towns and education, and they're shift, they used to pay for all of that, and over the last couple of years, they've shifted more and more to, not just us, but to all school districts. We've been able to decrease our purchase services a little bit, and that's driven by our tuition for out-of-district students. Both, some students are exiting out of the program, and then this anticipation of one student returning to attend the new alternative program. Of course, there's a contractual increase on our general transportation, which is our contract with DATCO, although we did realize some savings this year. It's a one-time savings that we realized because they, generally in those contracts, you have a performance bond, some other things, and we were able to sort of squeeze out some savings around some of those things. Joanne can provide a little more detail if you'd like around that, down the line. I mentioned the special education numbers and taking a look at that. So just, just recently, we put together just a little data point comparing our Derg and the percentage of total expenditures of special education for the overall budget. So this is based on the, not this year's budget, because we're still managing and working in this year's budget, so this is last year's budget. And again, it just gives some context, what, what do the numbers mean? So here, we spend about $19.4 million in, we spent in FY17, which puts us again right around the middle of the Derg as far as that percentage of overall expenditures. Our, what we call our prevalence rate, which is the percentage of students with disabilities, we're at 10.4, which again, is right around the middle of the Derg. That's a number I know Darlene, her staff, our administrators are always looking very, very closely at, as we continue to develop our RTI program, certainly we look at a, you know, relation between our prevalence rates and the, the supports we're able to offer to our students. But I think it, it just shows that the, comparatively speaking, certainly around our Derg, we're right around in step with those around us and, and the work that we're doing. I think that Darlene and her staff are doing an outstanding job in working with our kids, working through our budget, in managing this line. So our supplies object, we're also able to decrease a little bit. We've worked to streamline procurement and inventory of technology, equipment and supplies. You see these things here, we, there are supplies, this is one of these budgets that it's not greatly additive, as a matter of fact, we, we're actually decreasing a little bit here, but it is, it's laden with value, right? This is where we have our textbook purchases, we have our materials for our next generation science standard implementation that Melinda was here talking to us about, those, those Lego kits, the, the work the kids are doing, the foundations work, the, the other things. This, this is where these supplies go right into the classroom, right, work with our kids directly. And there's, there will be some fluctuation in this line year to year because our textbook needs may shift. You know, if we have a new series that we need to update in one of our courses at the high school, that can be a $30,000 line item. So this next year, we don't have that, so we're able to bring it down a little bit. The, again, we have advocates, supplies on hand right now for our reading program, so we're able to bring that down a little bit. So again, we're really managing this as closely as we can, but there's a lot of really exciting things in here, and this is where Jill and the Curriculum Leadership Council and others, our faculty, our instructional leaders are, are resourcing the great work that they're Again, small, small objects and equipment and other, equipment slight increase here. We're looking at replacing some furniture, we're doing some cafeteria tables over at South, some other things. You know, we've had some great luck and success, I should say, not luck, but great success with our furniture replacements at the elementaries, with our kinesthetic type furniture, standing desks, those kinds of things. So we're looking to expand and continue those initiatives. We also have our final lease of a transportation vehicle expires this next year. So if you remember, prior to putting them in capital and buying them outright, we were leasing them through the years, which was working okay too. But a few years ago, under the guidance of the town, they asked us to stop purchasing those leases and start buying them through capital, so that's what we've been doing. So our final lease payment is expiring. Just to show sort of the, the size of the other account, it's an $8,543 decrease, and that's because we had Tri-State this year, we don't have it next year. So I know it gets a little granular, but these are small budget items, and that can make a big difference. So pulling back and just going into some of the large budget drivers that I think are really worth noting. So again, it's a, overall increases, a little over $3 million. When we look at the, sort of what changes year to year, what changes in this budget, what makes up that $3 million or so? You see that the largest single item is the contractual wage increases for staff, and that's taken from, those are the teachers, administrators, teaching assistants, those not in negotiations. So we, and those, those numbers we'll know after negotiation. Grid progression is there. We have that salary adjustment, those are the units that are in negotiations, so that, that number's put aside for a variety of reasons. The employee benefits is 760. You see these larger numbers, you total those up, 2.7 million, subtract it from the 3 million, you have $323,000 remaining. So when I talk about the, the importance of understanding those large budget drivers and thinking So when I talk about the importance of understanding those large budget drivers and thinking about a board of education's budget, this is why. You know, so anyone could see a percentage number at a 3.48 and think that there's, that's a large number and maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but this is what it's comprised of. This is what it's made of. And as you see, these drivers here are a significant percentage of that amount. So I mentioned in the beginning, we don't allow those drivers to crowd out the innovation that we think is so important for us to continue to move our district forward on behalf of our kids, our community, our parents, staff. So some of the new initiatives that are inherent is that staffing for the alternative school, the staffing at the high school, that replacement of the VPA, the district media management, the learning management system, you know, all of these things together. So these are some of the new innovations that are in this budget that if we're trying to budget to a number, we'd have to make some really hard decisions about these. So we budget to what our needs are and budget and resource are towards our goals and towards our future. So we stay true to that. We also look, I mentioned efficiencies. We look for these efficiencies where we can find them. So we have the reduction of the 2.0 FTEs, the turnover savings, the contracts, the full year of processing payroll. So this year, we switched over just in January to processing our payroll in-house, including our payroll taxes and what have you. So we've been using ADP. So next year, we'll have a full year on that system and so we save another $12,000. So again, those efficiencies are so important to take. We took a close look at our staff training district-wide and we brought that number down a little bit. Even so granular as to one of our, some of our maintenance projects are to install hand dryers, you know, the air blowers at, in the bathrooms of the schools. Not all bathrooms, but many of the student bathrooms to put those around. Well, that cost comes with a corresponding savings of $15,000 or so in paper products. So in two years, it'll pay for itself. Beyond that, it's to the good. You know, so this is the level of detail that we bring to developing our budget and to thinking about it, just important, I think, to share with you. Again, Darlene and her staff so closely monitor our out-of-district placements and did a deep dive into our students, where they are, the ages and what have you, and they're confident in bringing that number down a bit. And then the reduction of the textbook need for next year. So, you know, all of these efficiencies help us to do the things that we feel we must do and then those things that we feel are so vital for us to continue to move things forward. So overall, the operating budget is $90,663,487, a little over $3 million, a 3.48 increase. Again, I, just to beat the point to death, 55% of the increase is those contractual increases. Simply salary plus grid progression is 55% of that increase and then 25% is the contractual health benefit. So we're talking about 80% of that $3 million or so is in those two spots, which makes sense because again, as I said, 81 or so percent of our budget is staff and so it is balanced with our needs and our prices. The remaining funding goes to these other areas. The project work, the transportation negotiations, legal fees. Again, the next-generation science materials are about $33,000, $34,000. The learning management system's $405,000. You know, but just those four large drivers there, that's $203,000 of the 612. You know, so it's important to know that we look at every single line, we build it from the ground up based on need, we use our goals, our understanding of the district in order to plan forward in our budgeting. Sustaining excellence and improving results. I'm happy to move into capital. I'm happy to take questions. I'm happy to allow other people to answer questions.
Yeah, if anybody, before, sorry. Before Dr. Lutzey moves into capital, if anybody has anything they'd like to visit on this operating side before he moves on, this would be a good time just to, we can always come back later, but. Okay. Oh, yeah, Penny.
Go first?
Sherry.
Well, I guess, I was going to ask if there was anything that was discussed at the budget workshop that did not make it into this budget? For example, I know we did have some discussion around the athletic programs, specifically the current freshman class, having Jay possibly look at, appending some coaches given the size of that class. And I'm just wondering if there were any other items that didn't make it into this budget, you know, after further review and discussion?
Yeah, we, from the budget workshop, so we did have a variety of different discussions and certainly the, you know, the coaching salaries in that piece is one that we're keeping relatively constant year to year. The, you know, when we looked at the technology and the distribution of technology, we'll talk about a little bit in the lease, when we get into the capital, the capital lease, we had to make some decisions around that in order to sort of meet our commitment with the town that we made to keep that to about $150,000 per year as far as the ongoing lease payments. So we had to make some, make some decisions around that. Does anything specifically come to mind for? Software? Yeah, yeah. The software costs, the, sort of looking across and sort of making decisions. If we have two programs that are performing a relatively similar function, can one do it for both groups and then can we capitalize on the resource that we already have? Glad to dig into it a little bit deeper.
Make sure we weren't missing any other items.
Sure, thank you.
Penny?
So I wanted to know a little bit more about the learning management system, software and really the concept between enrolling it out K through 12 in one year and if anybody's been using it on a trial basis this year?
I can speak to it briefly and I can invite Matt and/or Jill or anybody else to jump in. The, we started about a year ago researching and looking around and there are a few big players in this space and one seemed to rise to the top as the one that some of our surrounding towns are using. And I'm not going to use a brand name now, but it's something that they've been using with great success. It's not, the initial rollout wouldn't be K-12. You know, we would really, we would start on a smaller scale and we would expand that out, but there are significant training needs when you go to a system like this. We have been using another system here at the high school that's not, you know, different than this one, but the process, the thought that goes behind sort of the organization and the structure and the use and the function of it is relatively similar. So we have that experience going in from the past system that we've been using and the, what we'd probably look to do is identify some folks to be the, sort of the train, the trainers, that they would go, they would pilot it, use it in their classes at different levels and then ultimately, they would be the ones to help to bring it into the school district, into their, into their grades or into their buildings. And certainly, our technology integrators at each of the levels would be very important with that too.
So is this cost then, the $45,000, the year-one cost? Is it going to ratchet up over time or is it a one-time cost or how is that going to flow into the budgets moving forward?
So I think that what we are in the process of doing is coming back together as a committee. We're going to be doing two site visits to the districts to determine if we want to roll it out next year and what grade levels we would want to roll it out to, which would make most logical sense. So my guess is as we're moving along, that number probably will come down because that $45,000 is more that annual cost. The annual cost, there's a startup fee, so probably more like $30,000 as you move into year two and year three, but I am anticipating that that cost will come down because we probably will not roll it out K-12. But we do want to get out to the districts that are currently using it and have conversations with them about their rollout plan, how they provide it, staff development for teachers, how does this integrate with the system that we currently have at the high school Moodle, how does this integrate with Power School? So there's some questions that we still want to get into other districts and have conversations about. The committee is quite depth and we have lots of different people that are sitting on that committee that play different roles and different stakeholders to ask those kinds of questions. So I'm anticipating that after our site visit within the next week or so, that number will probably come down because we won't be rolling it out in a K-12 scenario. But if we were going to roll it out K-12, which is what the committee had originally proposed, and then as Matt Savastreni and I have further conversations about, as you start to talk with other districts, saying that might be too overwhelming to roll it out K-12 and to start honing back and thinking about a cohort of people that you would want to roll it out to and map it all out that seem more logical for us to move at that pace.
So, I mean, I just will be very interested to hear how that all develops. I mean, with software, it's always, you know, every year, the software gets a little bit better, right? And costs tend to come down a little bit in it. And you can also get a really powerful package that you don't necessarily, as a district, get to fully use. So I just would want to make certain that we thought that we were going to be using appropriately whatever we were putting in the budget.
Yep.
And we should have more answers for you by the 22nd. We just wanted to get a number in there for now, but we would like to pilot it next year and move forward with it.
And that is, we're speaking with the other districts is so valuable, right? So what does it look like in K? What does it look like in 12th grade and everything in between? To hear from them firsthand will be.
Other question?
I have a second question.
Sure.
Really more associated with the high school and Bill Egan and I was curious if you wanted to get that 90% participation rate up, because I do think that you hook a child on one topic or one activity and all of a sudden, all high school, you know, can kind of look in a more positive tone. What do you think we need to do? Is it 90% across the grades? Like is each grade 90% or the, you know, how does that fall? I mean, where's the hole? The 10% hole? Is it?
Well, I say it's really a pinhole.
Sliver, where's the sliver? I guess, you know, is it seniors who aren't engaged or more freshmen who aren't engaged or, you know, is there, how would you attack it if we said, we're going to give you $X,000 to attack this problem? You know, where would you go?
You know, honestly, I'm not even really sure how to answer that. 90% of a high school participating in clubs and activities is tremendous. You know, the more opportunities we can offer kids, always the better off we are and hopefully hooking somebody in. I don't really have an answer right now on what that would be, but I'm really proud of the 90% of our kids participating in something, you know? Just more exposure to more things, more kids hopefully would participate in that and reaching out to the student body and asking them what are their interests for kids who are not participating. But I think we're fortunate in the fact that we have so many that do participate and obviously we'd want everybody to participate.
But I think that is, that is a great question. I think it is worth, it's something we can reach out to, to find out, because it could be freshman year coming in, it could be students who maybe they're trying out for a team and there aren't spots for those, the students. It could be, maybe people are, maybe students are working, you know, and they just don't have time because they're working every day after school. So if, any one of those scenarios, you approach it a little bit differently. So it'd be, it's something, some data we'll collect.
Okay, thanks. Maria?
At the beginning of the year, at one of our meetings, we talked about the orange frog and the Yale ruler program and I know there's some preliminary work going on with that, that I think it's the EI ruler program. I know Bridgeport's piloting it. Are we, where is that in the budget?
Sure. The, well, Bridgeport's been doing it for years. Actually, Fran had done it years ago and you, Westport and Weston, I think, are also piloting it along with a couple of others, I believe. The, where would we find funding that's really professional development needs more than anything, I believe?
It's in the curriculum instruction budget under training.
Okay, so curriculum and instruction budget.
So that's not considered a program, I mean, it's new, right? It's, but is it considered a program to be listed up there?
And now, you know, it's.
Some of the training that we are using for the emotional intelligence also comes out of grant money. So we recently applied for that Title IV grant, which we talked about at that budget workshop, which is all dedicated to emotional intelligence. So our hope would be able to use, get that grant money and to be able to utilize some of that grant money as well. So it does sit within some of the grant money as well. We can use it for, within our consolidated grant money as well.
Other questions?
And some of it sits within Darlene's budget?
Right, right. Susan.
With Susan Bliss.
Susan, and as you know, we're required to administer a school climate survey every other year, things like that. So some of those costs, would those probably be in Darlene's budget?
Those are in Darlene's budget.
Darlene's budget as well.
Penny? Oh, Sherry, sorry.
So I just have a question relating to the reduction of the two fifth-grade FTE. So we're obviously not losing those students, they're just moving up to sixth grade.
Right.
So how does, and I know that's a larger than average grade size, so how does, do those just get absorbed with the sixth-grade team structure and, or would we need to be thinking about staffing for that grade as they move up through the system?
It's a great question and you're right. It's the, one of the strengths of the team structure in sixth, seventh and eighth, the four-person team, is that it does flex as the student population changes. Now, if there was a significant jump, then we'd have to look at it, but they can flex and stay within the class-size guidelines because of the four-teacher team structure and the way that it works. So we have four teams of four teachers and because they're all in the same building, you're able to distribute it out that way. In the fifth grade, they're two-person teams. So you can, you can reduce by the two because it's just, it's one of those, sort of those couples. But with a team structure, you want, you have that so that you can flex up and down as those, with the variability of the enrollment of it. Again, staying within the class-size guidelines. There's, it can be a little bit of a challenge sometimes if you get to a higher level to keep your, say, your math courses all within the guidelines, but we recent, we manage that and work with that as best we can.
Thank you. Penny?
Have we projected out in terms of the alternative high school, how we think those costs will look going forward? I mean, I think you do have to be very conservative about how many students you say you might bring back to district, because it's always hard to move a student from where they are, but in terms of moving forward and maybe not just outplacing as many students, maybe, you know, the initial placement would be into this alternative program. Do we have, you know, projections looking two, three, four years ahead?
We can. The, you know, the sort of back of the neck and sort of look at it is, we calculate around a $60,000 savings for a student returning from an outplacement. And that's looking at programs that are similar to what we're developing in-house, sort of averaging those out. And that's not including savings that we would realize from transportation. So there's also, there are some auxiliary savings there. That's a tuition savings really. So you figure the, you know, if one's at around that $60,000 number and if we anticipate that, right, maybe year one, there's one and as the program builds and gets, develops a reputation, I believe we would have more people coming because truly, we, we know how to do this, you know, when we do it well and we know educating our students and students that want to be educated here in town. You're right also that it helps us for, if a student is struggling, it gives us that alternative placement that we don't currently have, that can help to defer or defray or to really avoid. It's a, it's a cost avoidance in that way. So those are costs that we would have picked up that we don't wind up picking up, that really are savings. So there's, we do have a sheet that really shows that if a couple, again, if another student or two returns, then we're really net positive on costs and that's not even thinking about cost avoidance that's in place. So financially, we believe it's a very strong model, but the, the drive is equally or more about providing that education in New Canaan for students of New Canaan and doing it right for them.
Any other questions? Maria?
From what I read, it sounded like it's more of a choice for parents whether or not their children would come to the alternative program. And I read about the one in Darien, it sounds really great. I just feel like I don't have a picture of what this will look like and would parents choose it? Is there any way to poll parents to find out if, if this were offered, would you choose this over that?
Sure. Those conversations have been occurring with parents who have students, who have a population that would be, would be served by this and we've had some positive feedback from those parents. By we, I mean Darlene, but she has been speaking directly with folks. It's not something that you necessarily broadcast because it's really, it's for a small group of students, right? It's, but when we think about six to 10 or 12 students and sort of their needs and meeting their needs, both academically and therapeutically in an environment like this, that students and parents have given positive feedback and have found that appealing. The, sort of the bones of it are again, around that staffing, but the specifics about sort of what does it look like in the scheduling and the, the day itself and the start and end time and all of those things. Those are program details that the committee that's been working on this is really talking about working on now. But the, you know, the staffing needs will, and the staff that's involved will be a part of developing that program. I've. I've, I have experienced directly with an alternative school program. I began my career working in one. And it was, it was a program of choice. And for the 18 students that chose to be there, it was the right place for them to be, and they received an outstanding education as a result. So, you know, the program of choice component is an important component to this, because you're really looking for a commitment. We're making a commitment to the families, to the students, to the community, and we want them to make a commitment to the program that, you know, they're going to be there and they're, they're there for all the right reasons. The, so the interest, again, those conversations have been occurring and the interest is there. And so the, the one, for instance, that one student returning from the outplacement is a conservative number. And I, Darlene is more aggressive on that number than I was willing to be. And she's the one having those conversations directly.
Other questions? Okay. Guess we can move on to the capital side.
Great. Is it halftime yet in the game? Is it halftime yet in the game?
We're fully focused on you, Dr. Letzey.
All right. Well, capital will be significantly briefer than the operating. There are three dimensions to our capital budgets. Our facilities, technology, and transportation. In your budget book, you have our, the five-year capital plan, which is something we began, what, about five years ago, I imagine? And that will sort of lay everything out. What I'm just going to highlight tonight are things for next year. But certainly, our experts are here in the room behind me, and they're willing to answer any questions for you as well. So the, at a district level, for our facilities capital, we, we began last year with a line called Engineering Services. What we were finding in our capital requests was that we were requesting the amount to do the project, but we were coming up short in our planning and design resources in order to, to do whatever needed to be done. So what we've done is break out the engineering services here for our, the oil tanks in the roof over at South for next year. So the oil tanks, as I'm sure you recall, they're, the end of their useful life, and they need to be out of the ground by next summer, summer of '19. So what we're doing here is working with a firm to engineer what that, what it looks like. How do we, we're getting these tanks out. Now, in four of our five buildings, we're going to have natural gas. So this is another way that we're saving through natural gas. We're not planning to replace those oil tanks. But in one, over at West, we're not getting natural gas at this point, so we have to replace it. However, as you remember from the workshop, Dan talked, and John both talked at length about Saks and the oil tank at Saks, and how our plan is to hopefully abandon in place. But to do that, we have to work with an engineering firm to develop the, the plan, the testing, the monitoring, everything that has to occur in order to hopefully obtain that approval. So the oil tank money, the $150,000 there is for the oil tanks at four of the buildings, not the high school, because we don't need it here. But those tanks do need to be out of the ground or abandoned in place by summer of 2019. So that's that work. The roof over at South is our first roof to be done. Now, the, the challenge with a roof is, it's such a large project, and anyone who does school roofs does the work in the summertime. So it takes a, you have to plan it out a year in advance in order to put the RFP together to go out, you know, for that following summer. So this $100,000 is to do the engineering work, to understand it, to develop the RFP and to go out, RFP, for the South roof to be replaced in the summer of 2019. So it, we're, again, we're a year, year behind in doing that work. But then you'll see the next year, when you look at the five-year plan, the next year there's another $100,000 for another elementary school and another $100,000 for the third elementary school. So over the next four years, we'll be replacing the roof at all three elementary schools, and they are due. We actually deferred these a couple of years ago at the request of the Board of Finance. And we're doing okay. You know, we're monitoring, the repairs can be expensive. But this, we think, will get it, get these, get this replacement on track in the most timely and effective way. So continuing on, the playground restoration over at East. We had money for East and West this last summer. However, we, it didn't go as far as we had hoped. So with this funding of 140, we'll be able to finish the work over at East as well and repair those, restore those playgrounds. And the air dampers there. Over at South, some additional resources to complete the chimney work that needs to be done. We talked about that last year a little bit. Painting in all of the schools. Big number at West is the parking lot renovation, which needs to be done. In years past, we began with that, with the cost for the parking lot renovation in our capital budget, but Tiger typically has graciously pulled it into his and sort of worked it into his summer plans, did it when equipment was nearby and he had the things, what have you. So was able to save some money with that. But we wanted to start with it here, as we have in the past, and we'll have those conversations with Tiger going forward. The classroom painting, again. And over at West, and over at Saks, as you'll see on the next slide, we're looking and hoping to either abandon or replace, abandon at Saks, replace over at East, the oil tanks. West, no, East, at West. West will still be running on oil, and so we want to do that work this summer if we can. And Saks, again, we're looking to abandon in place, we want to do that work. So we have those two taken care of this summer. And then the remaining two next summer. And then here at the high school, I mentioned earlier about the high school auditorium. So there's $120,000 here. That had been in the budget last year as well, it was deferred. That's for the sound system. We have the quote from Kozler, they've come through and done quite a bit of good work. And of course, we learned so much over at Saks that we'd be able to use that to put a system in place that will be similar, so that whoever does step into that lighting and sound technician expert position, they'll be able to expertly run both systems. And we've had great success with the system over at Saks already. The gym floor refurbishment, we are looking to sand that floor down. Generally, you know, that, you wouldn't think that would be a $50,000 number, but the gym is so large. And what you wind up doing is literally, like at your home, if you've ever resanded your floors, you sand all of them down, and then you refinish it, you have to bring somebody in to redo the lines and to, and then when they're done, it's a brand-new floor, and it looks wonderful, it lasts a long time. So we're looking to do that this summer. What we typically do is refinish them, where you just strip it and add a new coat. And we've done that for years, but after a time, that doesn't last as long and what have you. So this will give us more years in the gym. And then the, we continue our energy conservation efforts, which we began last year. So our facilities capital total is 2.166078, which, believe it or not, when you look at the five-year plan, is around the cost of one roof at one elementary school. So in, in the next year's plan, we're over $5 million, you know, and we stay high because of the, the cost of those roofs. So we get a break by sort of deferring the South one more year. But we need to do that because we have to put together the engineering and the RFP and everything else. And at this point, most of the folks who do the work in the summertime of roofs at schools, they're either, and responding to RFPs are getting ready to. So we want to get this planned out and do it right. Our other two dimensions, or elements of the capital request are specialized transportation vehicles. We're looking to replace three more of those vehicles, and Roy spoke to that a little bit at the workshop. As you know, these vehicles get used every day, and the mileage is north of 150, 200,000 on these vehicles. So we, we cycle them out and replace them with, with new. And the technology lease. So we're continuing our, the lease program that we have. So we would look to add $150,000 worth of new payment, which gives us $600,000 worth of purchasing power, because it goes out over the, over the four years. But the cost in this budget for the technology lease, because it would be next year and then be the, this year and two years back, would be the 664, 945. And then once, then the following year, when the 205 rolls out, it'll be closer to around $600,000 or so. So total, putting all of those together, is $2,981.23. As you see right here. And as I said, we have our experts in the room. So if anyone wants to ask any questions around the capital, whether it be technology or the vehicles or the facilities, please feel free.
Any questions on the capital budget? Penny?
So, I mean, I'm all interested in, with the South School roof, where, where we are and what we're planning on with respect to looking at putting solar panels on it and perhaps defraying some of the cost of electricity. And I, I think you all are in the process of analyzing it, but I wanted to get that information out to the public.
Yep. We've talked about it quite a bit. And part of the engineering services would be to ensure that the roof that is put on South School is solar-ready. So, you know, those panels do come with, with some weight, and they have some requirements where, where they had anchored and what happened. So part of that engineering would be to engineer them. Certainly at South, we think also at East. We're not sure about West, only because of the sun coverage and things. But certainly, those two are prime candidates. South in particular, because the way it sits and the size of the roof, it's a large building that's, you know, one-story, so there's quite a bit of opportunity there to do some things. So, yeah, we, we are including that in the work for that engineer as they put it together to be sure that whatever roof is put on, or is replaced on South is solar-ready, can bear the weight, and we can go forward with that. We think that's, there's an exciting potential there.
I think that's terrific. I'm glad we're moving forward on that.
Yeah. Again, it's, it's always wonderful when it saves you money and it's environmentally friendly. It's like the propane buses, which we don't want to lose sight of, that's another important way. Just a quick little anecdote while you're flipping through the numbers, the, you know, the cold weather on Friday was a real problem for our school districts, right? So the, the roads were in tough shape, and, you know, we couldn't have school because of the, the snow that was in place and all those things. But if it hadn't snowed at all, many school districts would have been in trouble, we think. And I think many would have had to run their buses from Thursday right all through the night in order to have them ready to go on Friday morning because of the diesel, what happens. And still, two-thirds of our buses, we had that conversation too. But our propane buses just started right up, because they're under pressure, they can start in the cold, and you don't have those same issues and concerns around the temperature that you do with diesel. So an extra benefit that we didn't know was there.
That's great. Anyone else? Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to say thank you, and I want to just share again that we look forward to your questions. I know that there's, what, about 104 pages worth of numbers and information and data, everything else in front of you now, and it takes a while to digest. But we welcome your questions, and what we'll look to do is certainly respond prior to the next meeting, and we'll certainly walk into the meeting also with questions that anyone asks, so that everyone can have them. And as I mentioned before, Joe will be here next meeting to talk about insurance, and he'll have some updated projections using, we think, December's numbers as well. You know, our plan is a little trickier than most, because our plan year begins September 1. So we don't, there's two months of experience that we don't have as we're building the budget out. So even that one more month is helpful for Joe. So he'll be able to come and talk about that a little bit. If some adjustments need to be made that night, you know, I can, we can do that together. Great.
And so, I mean, I think you, you said this, but I'm just going to reiterate. So if you have questions, you know, submit them to Dr. Letzey, and as in the past, we'll consolidate all those questions so that everyone on the board sees the responses to every question that's asked.
Yeah.
So it's just a, it's a great best practice, I think, going through the budget process, so we all, we're all on the same page. Okay.
Penny? Do you have another question?
I, I don't know if this makes sense to the community or not, but one of the things, if, if we end up not being able to take our, our aggregate stop loss down from 125% to 120%, then we, you know, we're going to be funding the, that extra line item. And so I, and we've gone over this many times, so maybe I'm missing something. But is there a way to, does it, that end up impacting our operating budget at all? And if so, because the money that we are holding in the, that corridor is not actually money that's being spent by the town, it's just additional reserves that the town has. So I don't know if there's an appropriate way to somehow bring that fact out to the town bodies. In other words, we're looking at this increase, right now it's a 3.48, we're going to evaluate as we go down. But of that 3.48, actually, point blank percent is actually the increase in this reserve, which we would not anticipate spending, is really to the benefit of the town. You know, because I, I do think the 3.48 is going to be received as a, a high number at this point by a lot of people in the town bodies.
So specifically, what, what amount of the 828,000 would be, you know, that number you're looking for? Because that's the number that's an increase to the benefit, benefit accounts, correct?
Right. We did work with Joe to put together an internal services fund, both revenue and expenditure in the balance sheet. It's in the budget book, and you can take the opportunity, I'm sure, to take a look at it. It's going to be on pages 77 through 80, when you start going through it. And we, we worked a lot with the fund balance that carried forward. We were fortunate last year to have a good year. But as Brian said, we've had some adverse claims that have come through, and they're, they're impacting the projections. And one of the things that we looked at was, what can we expect to have in fund balance at the end of this current year? And if we have that number, you'll see it going through, what of that, how much of that number can we use to offset any budget increase? And we did use that offset to the fullest, fullest extent possible. But as Brian said, as we get further into the year, we're going to have more updated claims, and we'll be able to adjust this number as we have in the past. But that corridor is worth about $500,000.
$500,000.
It's, it's a big number. And we've assumed, based on our conversations with Joe, that we can, in fact, that there's market for that. But we just need to pursue it and make sure that it's viable. And so that's one of the things we're working on between now and our next meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So... Thank you to all the, the staff and administration that's been here for this presentation. Thank you for... No, no, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to the next item on the agenda is the Statement of Accounts with Dr. Keating.
The Statement of Accounts that you have before you tonight is through the end of November. We didn't have an opportunity last month to present it to you. There are no transfers in this report. The transfers will come next month, based on the reforecast for the current year. As you can see, we've expended 33.3% of our budget. We have encumbered 58.3% for a total of 91.6. And we've yet to encumber or expend 8.4% of the budget. And those are mainly for salary, hourly type of employee expenditures and other related benefits.
All right. So does anyone have a question on the Statement of Accounts? This? Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Keating. So we'll move on to the first read of the district budget. So if I could get a motion to approve as a first read, the 2018-19 New Canaan Public Schools District Budget. Brendan? Second? Sheri? Okay. So that's just a first read, so we'll have our vote on the budget after next, next, in two weeks.
22nd.
On 22nd. All right. Moving on, we have the 2019-2020 Calendar First Read. So you have at your places a suggested 2019-20 New Canaan Public Schools Calendar. I guess we'll go and move, it's always a, a move to, could I get a motion to approve for a first read, the proposed 2019-2020 New Canaan Public Schools Calendar? Hazel? Second? Jen? Okay. Any discussion?
Sure. So if I can point one or two things out for you, and then certainly glad to talk about it again on the 22nd. As you know, our calendars, we have a first read and a second read, because it is important to give the board and the community time to think about it. This is for 2019-2020. And the, the challenge in this year is just the way the holidays fall throughout, it's a bit, and then the way June falls, it's a little bit tight. So, our Board of Ed has a policy that says that the last day of school can't go past the Friday of the third full week in June. There's another policy that says that the Board of Ed will have two-week-long vacations from January to June. So, those policies in a year like this can squeeze you a bit. Then, when you look at the December winter break, with Monday, the 23rd, generally, if 23rd's a day we would have school, we would have a half-day if that was on a Friday or any other day. But on a Monday, it just doesn't make sense, as I look at it, to have a school day there. So, it becomes a longer break there. And then, the final sort of compounding factor is that, and you'll see in September, Rashashana, and in October, Yom Kippur, both occur during the week. So, those are days. So, all of that creates a tight calendar for the board. So, we looked at it and did a little research, and back over, I think, the past 25 years or so, the average number of snow days has been 2.8 snow days. But then, we looked at it more recently, and the numbers have been higher. As you know, storms have been more intense, and we've had things, we've had snowstorms and windstorms and others that have shut down the district for days at a time sometimes. So, what this budget looks, or this calendar looks to do is to, understanding those constraints, to begin on Wednesday, the 28th of August. And then, you'll see at the end in June, there's a professional development day there on the 17th. So, on this calendar, the last day for students would be Tuesday, June 16th. It builds in three snow days, and then, the board would decide, if there were more than that, if what the board's done in the past is to reduce from 182 school days to 181 to 180 where necessary, which if that were the case, would be five snow days. And then, if we were to go beyond that, we would look at the April break typically, is what the board has done in the past, to reclaim those days. But that one day, moving that one day to the end, seems to make a difference, or it does make a difference, gives us that extra leeway there. And while it's a bit of a tight start, you know, for staff, we like to have the three days in the beginning because the professional learning is so valuable. Feel that, just given the sort of the perfect storm of all of these constraints here, that this was the best way to put it together. So, welcome you to take a look. It does maintain the week in February and maintains the week in April. The February would be the Friday and then the full week, and then April 10th is Good Friday, and then it would be the week after here. There you have it.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on the calendar? All right. So, we will vote on this on the 22nd, so you have time to review it over the next week.
Yeah. We'll put it up on our website if anyone would like to take a look and comment. I'm certainly welcome to do so.
Okay. So, the final item in our action items is the donation to the New Canaan Hockey Program. If I could get a motion to approve a donation in the amount of $16,810.58 from the Friends of New Canaan Hockey for the Boys Hockey 2017-18 season. Hazel? Second? Katrina? Any discussion on the donation or questions or Dr. Letzti?
Well, I would just like to make a comment to say thank you again to the Friends of the New Canaan Hockey. You know, each year, they provide significant resources for both our boys' and girls' programs, and it really does make the difference. The ice time is incredibly difficult to schedule, to arrange, and it's very expensive. And they really defray the costs to make it work for all the students involved and for the school district. This is half of the payment about, and the other half is forthcoming. But their generosity and really their hard work in raising this money really goes a long way to help our student athletes have the ice time that they need in order to compete in a very competitive league, and they generally do a very nice job.
I have a question. So, the other half of the payment, would that be, do we get girls' hockey? So, that's why I just wanted to make sure that that was exactly what was happening. Okay, perfect. All right. So, I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? If not, could I see the hands of those who are in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. And it doesn't look like we have anyone from the public who wants to comment at this point, so we will move on to announcements and future business. Dr. Letzti?
Sure. So, I mentioned a few times, Joe will be here to discuss insurance, and we will continue our discussion of the budget for 2018-2019 next time. We'll look at the calendar as well, and I think that that's going to keep us pretty Again, I wish everybody a happy new year and success and that, you know, a smooth rest of the return from the break. No more snow days would be wonderful. We'll take what we can get. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. If I could get a motion to adjourn. Brendan? Penny? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.